All right, welcome everybody to the Galt City Council meeting for March the first of 2022. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we continue to handle our city council meetings a little differently than we have in the past. I'm going to now ask our city manager, Mr. Lorenzo Heinz, to give a brief explanation to the public. Mr. Heinz.
Good evening, everyone. All right, very good. Good evening, everyone. Although this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted in person, today's agenda states that we are using audio-only telephone teleconference options, which allows the public to provide live public comment remotely. Members of the public may use the Zoom link described in the agenda to enter the webinar via audio only, and they should only be able to use the raise their hand option to speak when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. Members of the public may also use the call-in feature described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing star nine at that time. We request that all speakers, in person or on the phone, provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda also states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the city council meeting, which will be distributed to the city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you, sir. We will now adjourn to, I'm sorry, reconvene to open session. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
If everyone would please join us in a silent prayer followed by flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tina, can you please give our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air Friday, March 4th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, March 5th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrolcable14.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just do a quick report out of closed session.
Oh, sorry, yes, please.
Council adjourned to closed session to discuss one case of anticipated litigation as listed in the agenda. Council received information and provided direction, and there's no reportable action.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to item F, agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Mr. Heinz.
Mr. Mayor, if you would indulge me and the staff, one of our directors who was intending to be here for item L3 had an emergency and could not be here tonight. We were prepared to address the item, however, the emergency will prevent him from being here tonight, so I ask that item L3 be moved to the March 15th agenda.
Have any comments from council, concerns with that? Are we okay with that? Do we need a, we don't need a vote for that, right? Frank? Just a consensus?
Yeah, consensus is fine. We just need to make sure that council's okay with it.
Any opposition to that? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Heinz. All right, we'll move on to item G, presentations. Do we have any presentations this evening?
None this evening.
All right, thank you. Now to item H, public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may be submitted as noted above via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. Written public comment may also be submitted via email prior to the meeting to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
Okay, thank you. So, we are allowing, I know we're back to live meetings, a little different than before. We are allowing public comment by telephone and on Zoom. So if you are watching via Zoom, you can raise your hand to speak a public comment, or you can press star nine if you're on the telephone. If you are in the chambers, you need to fill out a speaker sheet on the backs of the room here and bring that forward. Do we have any public comment at this point? Tina?
No hands raised, and Mr. Baillies is not on non-agenda items. He'll be on commission on AG.
Okay. All right, well, I will allow a little bit of time here for those viewing remotely to either raise your hand, pressing star nine, or using the phone-in feature, or, I'm sorry, the Zoom, to raise your hand on Zoom. So, we are now in the public comment period. All right, Tina, do we have any hands raised online, or?
No hands raised.
Any calls?
No calls.
All right, I will now be closing the public comment period, and we'll be moving on to item J, our information consent calendar. I'm sorry, item I, our reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. We'll start with our vice mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me the opportunity to report. I attended CSD two-by-two meeting along with Councilmember Lozano and city manager, Mr. Heinz. The only thing I'd like to report, there will be a grand opening fire station 77 in Elgro on March 22nd. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. The groundwater authority did meet. They spoke about budgetary discussion on installation of well, there was for monitoring, there was just a small adjustment, a lot of activity, a lot of public activity fortunately, and discussion of partnership with community to ensure all stakeholders are involved.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Papino.
On the 24th of February, the Regional Air Quality Management District met. We were updated on a lot of expected legislation. Right now, most of those are placeholder bills that are being developed in that related to the environment, so we're kind of waiting to see how those shake out. And then also updated on the regional push to zero emission vehicles and technology between Sacramento Regional Transit, SMUD, SECOG, and our district. And to shorten it up, they're making a lot of progress. RT has 600 buses that they intend to convert to zero emission. Fifty are done so far. So, they're moving along, but a long way to go still.
All right, thank you for the information. Councilman Lozano.
Yes, a couple of things. We had a SECOG board meeting on the 17th. I had to leave a little early to attend the police department award ceremony, but we did meet in closed session for confidential item regarding employment. And then the Race Equity and Inclusion Working Group brought a master plan of what the Race Equity Inclusion Working Group put together to move forward. And so there was some discussion about what that really looked like. If you guys are interested, I would encourage you to watch the meeting. It was quite interesting. And so the real crux of everything is, is how we're going to look at jurisdictions and look at areas of the region to ensure that folks that are less fortunate, either financially and/or by housing, are considered as policy rolls out of SECOG. And so that's pretty much the extent of it, of that meeting. Like I said, I had to leave early there, had a workshop on housing after that, so. And then, just to add on what the vice mayor said about the CSD two-by-two, it was a good meeting. We were able to, actually, the city manager was able to update them on our strategic plan, went through that, went through the Market Master Plan, where that's at, and then the Walker Park information that we've received here at council. The other, the last thing was, is that they're getting ready to build a community center in one of their neighborhoods, and so it was kind of an interesting conversation about what they're doing. If you think about our Phase Four at Walker Park, it's kind of similar, you know, something like that, where it's in the middle of a park, and it's, you know, a place where people can go and work out and do all that kind of stuff. So it was interesting to see their conceptual designs and how they went about the process of coming up with what they're going to go out to bid for. So, pretty interesting, and they're expecting to have completion of that done in January of '24, so it's going to take a couple of years, so. And I think that's it. That's all I have for the regional stuff.
All right, thank you, Councilman Lozano. I myself wasn't necessarily a meeting, but I went out with the Galt Youth Commission, which I am a part of, on the 19th, partnering with the Beautification Committee. We did a community cleanup, very good turnout, a lot of people. I thank Councilman Vandenberg and Councilman Sandu for attending that as well, and attended the PD Awards Ceremony with, I think all of us were there, and it was a great ceremony. So, that is all I have on that. Moving on to item J, information consent calendar. It is recommended that items one through five be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Do I have any items by any council members? Okay, with that, we'll be looking, actually, I'm going to open the public comment period for the consent calendar, so if you are online and you'd like to speak, you may raise your hand on Zoom or star nine on the telephone to speak on these particular items. Item one is going to be the subject and minutes of the regular meeting of February the 15th of 2022. Item two, receive and file warrants for the period ending February 16th, 2022. Item three, AB 361, resolution making findings necessary to continue to conduct Brown Act meetings by teleconference. Item four, amendment number one to task order number two with REY Engineers for Improvement Plan Review Services for Commercial, I'm sorry, for Simmerhorn Ranch Phase One. And item five is to amend Section 2.95.050 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding appointments to the Public Safety Committee. Do we have any public comment on the consent?
No public comment.
Okay. Now, we're looking for a motion to approve these five items.
Move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Papino. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Consent calendar approved five to zero. Moving on to item K, Schedule Matters Notice of Public Hearing. Do we have any this evening?
No public hearing.
Thank you. Moving on to our regular calendar. First item's going to be from our city manager's office. It is, the subject is going to be receive the budget calendar for fiscal years 2022 through 2023 and 2324 biennial budget. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am, in my attempt to signal to the public and to the council that we are definitely starting to get into budget season here over the next few months, I wanted to lay out the budget calendar just so the public and the council knows what's coming as far as dates and the items that we'll be bringing before council to get the 2224 biennial budget passed. I've been in this business a long time, and the actual statement, making a statement of 2224 is eerie for me. I'm still dealing with 99, 2000 budget, but this is, this is where we are. So on March 15th, at our next council meeting, we will be presenting the mid-year budget financials. So we'll be bringing forth a financials to show the council where we are in the current fiscal year, and we'll also be presenting a long-term forecast, 10-year forecast, which will take it from this year on to 2032. We do these things to let council know and the public know where we are right now, and then the long-term forecast is to let the council and public know where we think we're going financially over the next 10 years. The thing about a 10-year forecast, while it's nice, it's really that first five years that have our best intellect, and then the remaining five, you know, we're just, we're just sort of speculating at that point, so I wanted to make sure I threw that caveat out there, but it is best practice to do 10 years. On the 15th, we'll also be coming forth with some mid-year position requests, and of course, those positions will be supportable not only in the current year, will be, also be, will be supportable on an ongoing basis. For example, one of those positions is our litter abatement worker, which we'll, we're looking to support with the ARPA funds, and so that, and a couple of other positions will be coming forward. On April 19th, we're going to present the 2123 Strategic Plan Quarterly Update. Back on January 18th, council passed our strategic plan for 2123, and a lot of those items were already in play by the staff, and so I am going to come in on April 19th and give you an update as to where we are on the items that we passed back on January 18th. Also on the 19th, we will present the narrative budget. Now, this is, I believe this is probably a newer concept for the city of Galt, but I wanted to make sure everybody understood, this is not necessarily the presentation of the budget. What this is, is sort of a big-picture document to kind of let you know from a national and state perspective what trends look like for sales tax and TOT, and what COVID has done to us and what we're recovering, and the steps that we're taking to recover from COVID, and just sort of some bigger-picture items, and before we start to drill down into the actual city budget. So it's a good overview, and I'm looking forward to presenting it. May 3rd, we're presenting the 2224 draft budget, and that presentation will not only be a presentation on the overall budget, but the departments will be providing their own departmental presentations of the budget at that time as well. And so it's a good time for the public and the council to understand how each department works from an operational standpoint, and I know a lot of this is already known, but it's a good reminder of how these departments work and how those operations and programs are budgeted. We'll also be presenting on May 3rd the 2024 Fee Schedule for Council Approval, or not necessarily for council approval, but just to get it in front of you. What we're trying to do is get these documents, the budget and the fee schedule, in front of you in May, and then we'll come back in June for final adoption. So that gives the public and the council plenty of time to comment on those items before we're in a situation where in a public hearing, and we've got to, we've got to get that adopted. On May the 12th, the 2024 Capital Improvement Plan and the Five-Year Capital Budget Plan will be presented to the Planning Commission. And then on May 17th, we will provide any additional budget updates. Again, this is, this is an add-on to the May 3rd budget, because the May 3rd budget presentation will focus mainly on the departments and the general fund. And so as we're discussing the departments and the general fund, there will be some discussion of Mejorar, because the PD is funded by Mejorar somewhat, and there's also, there'll also be a discussion of Fund Six. On May the 17th, we will give you an overview of the remaining 23 funds that we have, and just to make sure we cover the entire budget. And if there's any updates that we can provide, i.e., we had a change in the revenue estimate, we had another item that's occurred since early May to mid-May, this allows us to update that information as well. It's a, it's a, it's a very compressed version of the Governor's May revise. And then on June 7th, we'll start our public hearings for the budget, CIP, and the fee schedule. So, so not only will the public see those documents in early May, we will have the public hearing in early June, so basically have a month and a half to get feedback and comment from the public regarding these documents. On, on June 7th, we'll also be doing the final budget presentation to the council for any final decisions, and we'll also be doing the resolution to establish the appropriation limit, which is sort of a technical thing that each city has to do each year to basically address California law. And then on June 21st, we'll have the adoption of the 2224 Annual Operating Budget, and then myself, our Finance Director, Matt Boring, our revenue and, our revenue manager, Revenue and Budget Manager, Carlos Solario, will collectively collapse, okay, after that meeting. So it's going to, because it's going to be a long few months. Other than that, Mayor, council members, that's the budget calendar for the 2224 budget, and I'm open to any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, sir. I'm going to open the public comment on this particular item, if there is any, so if you are online and you would like to comment, please raise your hand on Zoom or star nine on the telephone. Do we have any questions from the council for Mr. Heinz on this item? No? Okay. Well, I appreciate the presentation, look forward to all these meetings. I think it would be very good for, I appreciate the slow ease into all of it. Personally, like to make sure that we give ample time to the, to the community to hear it ongoing, and then, of course, our public hearings, so. Do we have any public comment?
No hands raised.
All right, nothing in the room? Okay. All right. Been looking for a motion to, do I have a motion to receive? Action item. Frank, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, I need a motion to receive the budget calendar for the development of the fiscal years 2022, 23, and 2324 biennial budget.
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Approved five to zero. Next item is from the Public Works Department. The item is going to be approved, the Sacramento County Local Hazard Mitigation Plan 2021 Update. I believe Mr. Forrest and Mr. Heinz will be doing this in the absence of Mr. Selling tonight.
All righty. So I'm going to start, and I'm going to, I'm going to play Public Works Director for a few minutes. The Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of the year 2000 requires communities to develop a local hazard mitigation plan to remain eligible for federal hazard mitigation funding with updates every five years. The cities, the city has prepared and adopted this, this plan in 2005, 2012, and 2017, so we're due to adopt it again. Our senior civil engineer, Bill Forrest, is here to present the local hazard mitigation plan for adoption for 2021. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. City Manager Heinz, Bill Forrest, of the City of Galt Public Works Department. As mentioned, the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act requires the preparation, first one in 2005 participated in that preparation, that document, and this is now my third local hazard mitigation plan on behalf of the city of Galt. Probably the number one, I don't know, there's a number points of the benefits of the local hazard mitigation plan is eligibility for federal emergency management agency.
And there's both pre and post-disaster grants, and I'll kind of come back to that at a later point further in my presentation. This one was kind of unique with the pandemic in that previous preparations, we met in various locations throughout Sacramento County, took, heard public testimony, and with the pandemic, everything was done via Zoom calls. So there wasn't quite as much collaboration and outreach with the various cities and special districts that are helping prepare the plan. As mentioned, there are about five disaster mitigation grants eligible. The first one is what's called pre-disaster. That is something that you can do to the community. A big one is, we're seeing, FEMA's seen a lot of pre-disaster mitigation grants for generators to power critical facilities and whatnot. There are three components to the local hazard mitigation plan. Hazers, hazard identification, what are the things, natural hazards, and I guess I should stress that. These are natural hazards. So there's hazard identification within, there's a long laundry list, anywhere from volcanoes to local flooding hazard mitigation. I remember the first one I did, tornadoes were on the list, and I said, well, that's, you know, something for the Midwest or the central plain states. And comes to find out, in Sacramento County, there were recorded tornadoes slash water funnels, particularly in the northern portion of the county, which I was surprised to learn. And then second is vulnerability assessment, critical infrastructure, critical care facilities, you know, the fire stations. And then last is capability assessment, you know, how resilient is the community for the, against the particular hazard? Interestingly, pandemic, which you'll see on the list, was actually on the list in the last iteration, I believe, as I recall, it was either the time of the Zika or West Nile outbreak, and so pandemic has actually been on a list, but obviously with the COVID-19, that's kind of been advanced in hierarchy. This, this kind of gives you a flavor of disaster mitigation declarations in Sacramento County since the 50s. The preponderance, as you see, are related to flood events that have occurred. The pandemic, 2020 pandemic is on that list. That's both a state and a federal declaration. Drought is also a, has been a declaration. So that just kind of gives you a flavor that of the long list of natural hazards that can be present in Sacramento County, there has actually been disaster occasions in the 70-year history as presented on this slide. This slide is particular to the city of Galt's portion of the local- This slide is particular to the City of Galt's portion of the local hazard mitigation plan referred to as ANXD. Why they don't call it a chapter, I don't know. So, so each city, Sacramento County, special districts such as levy districts, levy maintenance districts, you know, Consumis Community Services District, we all had an annex chapter in the Sacramento County's local hazard. The blue box is the very, the various natural hazards that are, have been, if you will, evaluated to be a medium to a high risk, particularly for the City of Galt. Preponderance is related to flooding, local flooding as well as hundred-year flooding, which kind of goes along with that previous slide where the preponderance of emergency disaster declarations fall under that category. The larger box is, is mitigation actions that the city can undertake. So the very first one, which is incorporating reference to the local hazard mitigation plan into the safety element of the city's general plan. That particular mitigation measure has always been on the list and the part of the preparation document, you kind of give, you know, okay, what mitigation actions have you accomplished or not accomplished and why? And for example, that very first one, we adopted the general plan in 2009 and we never had an occasion to modify it. This year or next will be different because the community development department associated with some other things will be modifying the general plan. And I'll slip in there and get the local hazard mitigation plan referenced in the city's general plan safety element. Last example of mitigation is the last one, number eight, which was maintain the city's drainage ways. And to do that, we need to get permits from U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and California State Department of Fish and Wildlife. And so I got notice of a pre-disaster mitigation grant application. And since I had that mitigation action on a, on a previous mitigation plan, I applied for a pre-disaster mitigation grant to, to be, I didn't get it, but because it was mentioned as a mitigation action within the mitigation hazard plan, it was given due consideration. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I am open to any questions. And the action requested of the city council is adopt the resolution approving the Sacramento County Local Hazard Mitigation Plan 2021 update. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Forrest. I would like to let the public know that if you would like to make public comment on this particular item, you may do so on Zoom or on the phone or in the room if you fought a speaker card. I have a couple of questions and then I'll go around to my fellow colleagues here. So I know this, obviously, this is an important document we approve because if we don't, something happens, we won't be eligible for federal dollars. So obviously, that's the most important thing. But I just had a couple of questions on this. I found it actually kind of interesting. So on page 85, there's like the sheet talks about the hazard identification assessment. It talks about all the different things and then it rates them as likely, unlikely, and those terms are deemed different things. And then the magnitude, the severity, significance, and so on. What I thought was interesting is, and I, and I don't know if you can even answer this, but I'd like to get your insight on it, is under drought and water shortage, it actually labeled it for Galt as unlikely. So under the table, unlikely basically is, is listed as being, so if something is marked unlikely, it is less than 1% chance of occurrence in the next 100 years. But yet, further down or further up, I guess, they talk about climate change as being likely. And the report, under the climate change, it talks about how the two, number two, number one and number two things under the climate change, the likelihood of climate change, according to them, is decreased participation and hotter temperatures. So why would, so just, why would they, in, in, you know, we live in a state, it's always talking about drought and water shortage, whatever. Why would this report mark that as unlikely? Just seems strange.
The best analogy I can give is as it relates to what's referred to as the hundred-year floodplain. And we refer to it as the hundred-year floodplain, but for example, in the 70s and the 80s and even 90s, the, the north portion of the county experienced several hundred-year flood events. And so the unlikely chance of a drought as well as a floodplain can be, the analogy would be, your drought is a white marble, you throw it in a bag with 99 marbles, you shake it up, you reach in, you could pull out a white marble, which is the drought, or, or not, you throw it back in, you shake it up, you could draw it again or not. So, you know, given the particular recent history, maybe when this was prepared, we were heartened by the amount of rainfall we had received earlier this winter. But that's the short answer is that drought is probably in future, as we get into more climate change-related, extreme climate events, that assessment will probably change.
All right. I just thought it was weird. It was unlikely. I mean, likely is seems to, it's like a 10 to 100% chance because, so if they deem it as likely, you could say that it's a 10% chance, which is still small, but it's gives a little more wiggle. And I know this is, you know, I don't think our, our, our eligibility for any federal is going to be based on whether or not this chart is, we feel, I was approving this tonight, is not based on the accuracy of our opinions on what we feel is deemed whatever. I'm just simply asking because it's in the report.
Yeah. And, and a good example is even though it's an unlikely, there's actually a fair amount of, a couple of mitigation measures related to drought and more water resiliency. If you notice, the city is involved with the groundwater management group. And that's, you know, the, if you will, the short answer to the purpose of that group is to develop a resilient and sustainable groundwater for the basin that the City of Galt is in. So if you will, that action could be considered as a mitigation against drought, increasing water supply resiliency. And so even though it's unlikely, there's actually a number of mitigation measures, at least that one mentioned.
And funny enough, at the bottom of the same page where it says that, you know, a drought is unlikely, it actually states that there was three occurrences in 2008, actually, 1977 was a federal disaster drought, and then in 2008 and 2014 were two state droughts. So we have three occurrences within, you know, since in my lifetime.
Right.
And yet they say, I don't know, I just thought it was weird. On the flip side of the coin, on the, on the, on the talk about flood, I think it's funny that it also says unlikely, but yet they name, I think you showed on your slide, 19 occurrences of floods that were deemed state declarations of floods, but they also deemed that one unlikely as well. So I'm, maybe I'm not understanding the way they're considering flood. I don't know, maybe.
Well, it, it gets back to that unlikely threshold of, of being 1% or less and, and my analogy of, you know, drawing the white marbles, so.
There's 19 white marbles in here, though, in the last 100 years.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like one marble.
I mean, yeah.
Well, thank you for your answers. I know that you didn't create this. I was just simply asking.
Yeah.
Does any of the council have any questions, Mr. Forrest, about this presentation?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, thank you, Mr. Forrest, give us a detailed information, detailed reports. I know it's a big report, I think more than 100 pages. And this is update from 2017, right?
Yes.
And just, I know it's a big report and especially this report tonight, I'm favored to suggest on that report, but just kind of brief and very little information, what's the major update, anything in the significant update from 2017 to 2021?
Probably the elevation of pandemic from, from, probably previously from a low to a, to a medium and high. And, you know, in the preparation, this document, you kind of live in times that, that, you know, you're going through. And like I said, it actually rose to a category based upon my recollection, it was, I believe it was the Zika virus outbreak. And so it's like, oh, there's a natural pathogen out there that could potentially cause a pandemic. So that was probably the main one. I do, it wasn't particularly important, but on the previous medium list was dam failure. And in this go-around, I, I looked around and what dam failures looking at is, for example, in the case of Folsom Dam, they have done dam failure innovation maps, you know, okay, if this dike on Folsom breaks, where will the water go and what will be flooded? And so for this year, I, I saw that particular hazard on the list from the previous one. I'm going, hmm, I'm not too sure about that. And I kind of looked at particularly upstream dams and all the ones that would flood everybody, potentially everybody else but Galt.
You know, my next just to clarification, that's why in the report, is flooding is high, medium threat. That's why the reason is a high, medium threat on flooding due to dams.
Yeah. And, and that kind of, if you will, it's unlikely, but we've had a fair number of incidents, disaster declarations within the county. So, you know, the City of Galt is not protected by levies like other, you know, San Joaquin County or other areas of, and in hindsight, that was actually a good thing in that FEMA changed the rules after Katrina and other levy disasters. And they essentially, previously with the floodplain maps, they grandfathered levies. And in, it was about 2010-ish, as I recall, they said, nope, we're not going to accept on face value that those levies will provide protection. And so cities and agencies that were protected by levy, they had to geotechnical analysis and essentially certify that the levies would be resistant. Since the City of Galt had no levies, I didn't have to do that. And the, the other thing related to the city's policies is that the city has a general plan policy not to allow development within the hundred-year floodplain. So in, you know, in terms of vulnerability assessment, if you don't have structures in the floodplain, they can't get damaged. So that's a good thing on, on the part of the city's policies.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any other council have questions for Mr. Forrest?
Yeah, I have a couple, real quick. As far as the levies, you know, I travel up and down the delta a lot and it's quite good that they made those new rules because over the years, I've seen many of the levies reinforced with heavy rock. It's, it's a very good thing to see. It's a, it's a lot of rock and it's something that takes a long time, so it's very good to see. Thank you for the presentation for the public. If you're really into the details, you know, there's like a, what's it, 2,600-plus-page document you could read. But I just had a question. At the end of your presentation, you mentioned the grant that you went for. I was wondering if you had any concerns about the Galt's, what was it here, the city's drainage channels and open spaces. Did the recent deluge of water we received, did that highlight any needs or stresses that the city has? Because I thought the city did quite well considering the amount of water we received.
No, I totally agree with you with the, on that assessment. I mean, the rain event that we had in late October was considered a 200-year rain event. But after, I mean, six plus, seven plus inches of rain in a little over a 24-hour period, but I, I, you know, perused the various drainage channels and there was actually hardly any water. So kind of tying it all back together, I think the drought actually helped us by creating very dry soil conditions so that the water could then penetrate into the soil. The very, the various drainages and even local flooding was very, in my assessment, very minimal for the City of Galt considering the amount of rain that we had. So I, I, I think it's a multiple factor thing. I touched on the, the dry soil conditions. I think it also relates to the city's operation and maintenance of, of said facilities.
So, so absolutely, I agree. So basically, you were just taking advantage of opportunities and I could appreciate that.
Yeah. It's, it'll need to be done eventually, particularly Dead Man's Gulch. Everybody is aware how, how much vegetation's in that channel south of the community park. So it, we've been dealing with it, you know, all the various rain events that have occurred in the city for the last 30 years since the Dead Man's Gulch Channel was created in northeast area. But at some point, we are going to need to do it.
Thank you.
Just as a pre-disaster proactive action on the part of the city.
Any questions from anyone else? Yeah, that Dead Man Gulch, that was an area we cleaned on the cleanup day. We went underneath the tunnel that goes some of the road. There's quite a bit of debris in there, caught up in the bushes and stuff, all sorts of interesting things down, stuck up in there, bicycle wheels and, I mean, all kinds of random stuff down there.
I'm surprised, when I've participated in creek cleanups in the past, shopping carts are the, the thing de jour that you usually find in drainages.
One last comment. We asked you about, we were talking, you were just speaking about the, the amount of rain that we got and you said it was a 1 and 200 year. And I was thinking to myself, well, there's one of those white marbles you were just talking about.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Forrest. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Okay.
Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Oh, sorry, I did not see.
Just make one comment. It's not a question. Thank you for the report and very well done. I found it interesting that in looking at our critical infrastructure, that we have only two cell towers in the city. Now, I'm not a cell tower guy. I mean, I don't know how many it takes to run anything, but that may explain why I drop calls all the time.
I can at least count four off the top of my head. So I think in the future, we'll have to.
Yeah, take a look at that again.
The.
But it made perfect sense.
Yeah.
Can never keep a call on my phone, though.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks again for the report and being on top of this.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the report. I won't make you explain the leaky underground storage tanks that I asked about today. It was fascinating explanation, though, so, but thank you for the report.
All right, so again, no public comment online, Tina? No hands raised? Okay. All right, thank you again, Mr. Forrest. And I will be looking for a motion to approve, or I'm sorry, to adopt a resolution approving the Sacramento County Local Hazard Mitigation Plan 2021 update.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Vandenberg.
Taken.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Resolution's approved five to zero. As noted earlier by City Manager, we have tabled item L3. For those of you that may not saw that in the beginning of the meeting, table two are March 15th meeting, sir? March 15th. And with that, we'll move on to item M, communication. Do we have any communication this evening, Tina?
No communication.
All right. Next up is going to be item N, the City Clerk's Report. First item's going to be, subject is Commission on Aging Appointment.
So this recommendation is Mayor Farmer appoint a community member to the Commission on Aging to fill a vacant position in remaining term ending December 2022. Mayor Farmer appointed Alvin Roberts on March 6, 2019, and he submitted his resignation on January 5, 2022. The Galt Municipal Code Section 2.97.050 established a process by which a person is appointed to the Commission on Aging. Section 2.97.050B states that up to two members of the commission may reside outside the city limits but within the boundaries of the Galt Joint Union High School District. With the resignation of Mr. Roberts, all applicants meet the specified required qualifications. The applications received were from Libby Robbins, Linda Berg, and Colleen Walton. Applicants have been notified of the meeting and have been invited to attend. If there's anyone here that was invited, or if you have questions, Mr. Mayor?
I just wanted to say, I want to thank all three ladies for showing interest in the position and for their applications. They were all, any one of the three could have probably done a good job. I did interview two of them, and I am familiar with the third through community relationships. And it was a hard choice. So for the two that I didn't appoint, I do encourage them to, if they want to be a part of helping the seniors in the town, to reach out to Commission on Aging and see if there's anything that they can be a part of, and still, I encourage them to still be involved. But I would like to move forward with appointing Libby Robbins to the position. And she's actually here this evening, so I don't know if you would like to come and say something?
Hello, my name is Libby Robbins, and I just wanted to introduce myself and thank Mayor Farmer for the appointment to the Commission on Aging. And I've been a community member of Harold for the past 12 years now, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you. So thank you very much, and I hope I serve you well.
Thank you, Libby, and I appreciate, I look forward to what you can bring to the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need public comment on that particular? All right, so if you have public comment on this item, you are welcome to fill out a speaker sheet. If you are in the room, or if you are online, you can raise your hand on Zoom or star nine on the telephone. I will allow a few moments for anyone who wishes to speak can do so.
We do have a public comment in the audience from Mr. Ballier.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, Madam Clerk, and Mr. City Manager. Congratulations to Ms. Libby on her appointment. Looking forward to working with you as a member of our team. I have a little present for each one of you, not trying to influence any decisions. Just wanted to share the Commission on Aging Resource Guide for our seniors that we published. We did 500 copies of these, and I had to put them all together myself. Well, I actually put them together myself because I was bored, so I did, and to save some money. So if, Mayor Farmer, if you don't mind me approaching the dais.
Sure. Would you like to just quickly, for your public time is up, tell us kind of what the contents of this is for people that may be watching at home?
So we used to provide or make calendars for our seniors. They were smaller, and the print was smaller, and it was harder for them to read it. So what I did, in conjunction with the commission, we decided to take out the calendar part and to just have the contact numbers that pertain to seniors. For example, on the inside, there's an index. It says, "Contact for City Council Members." If any of the seniors want to contact you, they have your official number. Emergency numbers, emergency assistance, in-home care, special health care services, pharmacies, special health care, general health care businesses, organizations helping seniors, homes and communities, nursing homes, assisted living, retirement communities, Galt churches, and fun and recreation. It's last, it should actually be first, but whatever, that's where we're at. So that's what's in here. I have to call each one of those numbers before I publish it to make sure they're still in effect, because sometimes they get changed. So, you know, I'm trying to keep busy, stay out of the street, you know, just doing my thing.
All right. Well, thank you for putting those together. Appreciate the hard work on those.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for all you do. Do we have any other public comments, Tina?
No public comments.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll move on to item number two from our City Clerk's office. It's going to be the appointment of one non-voting city council member to the Public Safety Committee. Tina?
So this recommendation is appoint by motion one non-voting city council member to the Public Safety Committee, which will be effective 30 days after final adoption of ordinance number 2022-1. On March 1, 2022, tonight, city council adopted ordinance number 2022-1, changing the terms of having two voting city council members to one non-voting city council member on the Public Safety Committee. Ordinance number 2022-1 takes effect 30 days after final adoption, and accordingly, said appointment would commence on March 31, 2022.
Okay, so as Ms. Hubert just said, we previously had, Vice Mayor Sandu and I were both members of the safety, but the spirit of consistency, we've reduced that and changed our municipal code to one non-voting position to be consistent with other commissions and committees. So I didn't even reach out to Vice Mayor to see if he was interested or what we were going to do, if either one of us are interested in continuing. I'm open to whatever, even if there's someone else of the five of us, as you just said. I mean, it doesn't have to be Paul or I to continue. I know we all have a lot of things we serve on, so I don't know. Your thoughts?
I mean, I will keep that position if everybody interests.
I would be fine with that. He would like to keep the position and remain on the public safety as the one member. Is that fine with the council? Okay. All right, so I'll need a, actually, I need to get a public comment on this. So do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
All right. So again, if you would like to speak on this item, if you are online, raise your hand on Zoom or star nine on the telephone to speak regarding the item to appoint a council member to the Public Safety Committee. I'll give a few moments for someone to do so if they wish. All right, do we have any public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
Okay, then I will be looking for a motion to appoint Vice Mayor Sandu to the Public Safety Committee effective 30 days after the final adoption of ordinance number 2022-1. Moved by Councilman Lozano. I will second that. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Appointment approved five to zero.
Thank you, sir, for continuing with that.
All right, moving on to item O, comments by staff. Mr. Hines.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you would indulge me a little bit, your city manager is an ex-high school wide receiver, so I've got a little sports update for you tonight. The Liberty Ranch Boys Basketball Team are right in the middle of regionals, and they were up 26 to 18 at halftime, and they're playing right now at the Golden One Center. But a big shout out to them for winning the San Joaquin Sectionals. Well done, puts our city on the map. Also, a big shout out to the Liberty Ranch Soccer, Boys Soccer Team, who also won the Sectionals as well, first time since 2013. By the way, both teams won league. In addition to that, the Girls Basketball at Liberty Ranch won league for the first time in the school's history. So it looks like the athletics here in Galt are going well. And not to leave Galt High School out of the picture, we've, a young lady by the name of Valentina Ortega was the first female wrestler in the school's history to make it to state. So like I said, I'm very proud of the accomplishments of these youngsters, and it allows an old guy like me to live vicariously through them. So, and that concludes my comments. I'm going to now pass it on to perhaps Chief Kalinowski to see if there are any updates from the Galt PD, and I would invite any other members of the staff to join us.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. First of all, I know it was noted, but thank you for your participation in our award ceremony. I don't know, it feels like months ago now, but I guess it was two weeks ago. So it was well attended, and I know there was a lot of positive thoughts about that. Upcoming, you should see some things from the PD in addition to budget stuff that we're dealing with. The drone program we'll bring forward in April along with our military use audits that we have to do with AB 481, and our annual report from last year should all be coming in April to you. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Let's go with Community Development Director Craig Hoffman.
Good evening, council members. On March 10, we will be holding a planning commission, and it'll be a follow-up public hearing for the Fairfield Residential Project. I know a number of you participated last time. So if any members of the public are looking to participate, again, that meeting will be next Thursday. And I would like to take a moment to thank, we're getting a lot of support from CACOG, and they're providing a lot of pushback to the state of California and HCD with kind of their heavy-handed approach to what they're doing with housing within California. So I know, Rich, you participate a lot, and you're hearing all those meetings. So thank you to CACOG, and thank you again to everyone. All right, good night.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. And now for Director Armando Solis with our Parks and Recreation Department.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Lorenzo, thank you for, I was recording that game. I was going to watch it when I get home. Sorry, sorry. I appreciate it. I really don't have an update. I just want to let you know that spring and February and late January isn't very nice to our parks, and we've had to start watering. We started watering about two weeks ago. You know, there were some concerns of it being brown, and we just had to turn it on. We also had to stop our trimming to focus on the mowing, so we will try and get back to that once we can. Just wanted to give you an update. If you have any questions about where we are and what we're doing, we'd be happy to talk to you, so. Have a good night.
Thank you, Director Solis. Human Resources Director Stephanie Van Steen.
Yes, good evening. I have nothing to update you on tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez.
Good evening. Briefly, just wanted to let you know that I shared something on social media just a little while ago. Sacramento County has a new program that they launched. It's a micro-business grant program, and it is county-wide, so all Galt businesses are able to apply for the program. It's a $2,500 grant, and it's eligible for micro businesses. So hairstylists, photographers, caterers, things along those lines, less than five employees typically. So we'll be pushing that out on social media. And then also just wanted to give everybody an update that our website launched successfully, and it's been up and running. We haven't had too many complaints outside of links not working that people were used to, you know, either bookmarked or favorites on their computers. So those are about the only things that we've seen on haywire so far, but that's gone well. And that's it. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And now our newest director, our Finance Director, Matt Boring.
Good evening. I don't have any updates for tonight.
You'll be hearing from Matt quite a bit over the next few months, so he'll have a quiet night tonight. And I believe that's it for the staff. Thank you so much, and, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I forgot our illustrious city attorney, Frank Splendario.
I have nothing non-privileged to share.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Must be sad to be in a position, everything you have is a secret, so you can't. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to comments by city council members and future agenda items. We will start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank you all the staff for giving us a clear and clean reports, and thank you, Mr. Hines. I also like to thank you public comments, and I also like to thank you public, come to the personal meeting. I also like to thank you for the media. And last week, I attended Galt, actually on February 17, I attended Galt Police Department Annual Award Luncheon, and it was well organized, good turnout. Thank you for the chief and your staff. I also get the opportunity to personally meet with Karawa family, Kevin Towns' family, and Capri Rera's family. On February 19, I joined the Galt Benefication Committee with Galt Youth Commission and community member. They clean up Carillion Boulevard almost from Twin City to Seminole. And I also like to thank you Call West. They bought the truck to take away the garbage. Congratulations to new Commissioner Libby Robinson, Commission on Aging. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. Good night.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Papino.
I think the Vice Mayor kind of covered it all, so congratulations, thank you, all those things. It's pretty crazy, since I've been on the council, there's actually a few people in here that I've never seen, not on Zoom and without a mask, so that's pretty cool. On the mask topic, we're all aware that things have been lifted, so we're able to do business like this. But a small segment is not, and that would be the schools. And I would encourage, I have no idea in what world it makes sense to hold on to that for two more weeks. But I've watched what the school boards have done, and they've made their decisions. And I would encourage everybody on both sides, wherever you fall on it, to be civil for two more weeks, and we'll get through this, let people make their choice, and we can move on. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Well said, Councilman Papino. I appreciate that. I think it's quite suspicious that my fellow council member complained about his phone directly after putting his number on the Commission of Aging list. Of course, I'm just jesting, but I appreciate the sports update. I think it's a really fine thing that. update. I think it's a really fine thing that so many young people in our small city are doing so well statewide in such a large state. It's, it's a really strong statement, I think. Economic development, I'm really happy to see the website. I cruised around on it today. All the things I struggled with seem to be gone. I did have one link that wasn't on my tabs, but I expected that, to be honest. And it's much nicer, much smoother. The things were as current as I would expect them to be. So thank you so much for updating that. It's, it's been a sore in my side for a long time. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Lozano?
Yeah. We need more cell towers. Or, or I need a new phone, right? Fortunately, Mr. Ballier and crew put the city number on there, so that, that, that's a good thing. Just a couple of quick things. I do want to thank the police department staff for, for the work on the award ceremony. It was very well done. Thank you to Ms. Mendez for the work in coordinating the work with all the rest of the staff on the, on the website. It's, it is much more user-friendly, makes more sense to me on how to navigate. So that's, that's, that's a good thing. And then Mr. Ballier and, and the Commission on Aging, I think this is a great idea, rather than doing the, the calendars, really having a resource guide. And so that's, that's going to be helpful, I think. Yeah. Ms. Robbins, congratulations on your appointment. We look forward to your work. And just a couple last things, just so it's not lost. And I know people have asked about it, but we are still meeting in a ad hoc committee with the, with Cal Waste and on, on some negotiations, and that's moving forward quite well. I would say better than, probably better than the Major League Players Association and the Major League Baseball. But the good, the upside to all that is, is the Stockton Ports will still continue to play regardless. So we'll still have some baseball around. And, and then lastly, I do have a CACOG Transportation Committee meeting coming up on Thursday, and so I'll report back out on that. So thank you to staff. Thank you to the community that came out and spoke, and Mr. Ballier, and those that we continue to keep in contact with outside of these, the formal meetings. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Well, first of all, it's good to be back. It's good to be, I actually was rusty tonight. I like balled my words several times. I'm so used to Zoom with all my things and where they're at. I was like, where's everything at? What screen am I looking on? I don't even know. It was lost up here. But yeah, it's, kind of feels weird to be just so happy. I want to echo what Councilman Papinow said. I just want to say I commend the, the school boards, both elementary, high school, for what they did. It's not an easy time to be a school, this last two years has not been an easy time to be a school board member, and it's been very difficult. I would not have traded them places. So I'm just want to give them big kudos for all their hard work. I want to say real quick, thanks to Armando and your team for staying on top of the landscaping and everything. I know this time of year, like you said, it's going to be tough, and they got a tough road ahead of them. But I noticed them out there seven days a week. I was actually shocked. Super Bowl Sunday, I saw people out weed eating, and I was like, wow. You know, even working today. So they're out there giving it their best, so please, please pass that along to them. And also, I wish Mr. Sunning was here. He's not, but I wanted to thank him for how pleased I am with how the Fourth Street improvements came out. It's phenomenal. Everybody, I've heard nothing but praise from the new steps and the improved safety measures that have been taking place along Fourth and on C Street, and feel it's going to be much better for the community, for all those businesses. And I sort of say thank you for the, the process was very smooth, and I think the, the inconvenience to the businesses, including my own, was, was very minimal, and it went by really quick. So congrats to Liberty Ranch and Galt High, our wrestler, Ms. Ortega, and our Liberty Ranch teams. Congrats on, on your achievements. And, and thank you to the PD staff chief and for putting on a good award ceremony. And, and congratulations again to the officers who were recognized that day. Well deserved. And so with that, that's basically what I have this evening. So I appreciate everybody who, the public who came tonight for our first meeting. Hopefully, we can get more people to come now that we're back in person. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:16 PM. Good night.